I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to Minneapolis, Minnesota. Or no, Holly Springs. Please rise for your place of allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
We're gonna wait for a minute. Do you need a cough drop? You need some water?
Yeah.
Here. Time out. Oops, sorry.
Thank you.
And tonight, the invocation will be given by Pastor Derek Kuhn from the Point Church in Holly Springs. This is a first, and he's gonna tell you a little bit about just getting started here. And welcome, first-time pastor. Appreciate you coming.
Yeah. Oh, go to the podium, please. You gotta be on TV, you know. It's a little formal for me, so stand at a podium, using a microphone, all that kinda stuff. No, so my name is Derek. I work for the Point Church of the Triangle. So, the Point Church is an eight-year-old church. We have thirteen churches in the Triangle that speak six different languages and seven different locations. And our newest location is right across the street. We just took over Holly Springs Baptist Church, right here in downtown Holly Springs. And so, on January 27th, it became the Point Church of Holly Springs. And so, we are opening public and having public gatherings to the public, starting on Easter Sunday, and then doing a grand opening in August this fall. So, it's really exciting stuff, what God's doing in our church, but I just wanna pray for you guys and get you guys kinda the meeting started here. So, let's pray.
Go for it.
God, thank you for just the opportunity that we have to gather together. And I gotta pray for this meeting. I pray that this meeting will go well. I pray that everything on the agenda is handled appropriately and to your will. God, I also pray just for the leaders of our city, from our town to the volunteers that pour in so much time and energy to make this such a great place to live and a great place to raise a family. God, we thank you for just giving us the opportunity to live in such a great place. So, God, just bless Holly Springs, bless the people here in this room tonight as they continue to try and make this a great place to live and to be a community that's worth being a part of. God, we love you. We thank you for Jesus. It's in his name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
I remember for adjustment approval of March 5th, 2019, meeting agenda, Mayor Protem.
A motion to adopt the March 5th, 2019, meeting agenda with no changes.
Second.
Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passing unanimously. Number five, the public comment period. We're gonna open it, and I'm gonna ask everybody to try to stay under three minutes if you can, or three minutes, or four, whatever. But, we're gonna call the, we're gonna open up the public comment period and call the first person on the deck would be somebody I've already talked to. And you're welcome back again. Gabrielle, and I think it's Wooden, am I correct? Close enough? Okay, come on up. Oh, you gotta come up. And if you will, speak into the mic. Good seeing you again.
Hi, everybody. Wow. This is a lot. I really just, I came to voice some concerns around the way that some things were happening, mostly for my seniors, my elders in my community. I live on Holly Springs Road, and because of the road widening, a lot of our elders are being displaced in the process. And we're kinda in the middle of everything right now. As he mentioned, I briefly talked with Mayor Sears. And I just wanted to create some awareness around what was happening and the way that it's happening. It's a very violent process. It's been very difficult for people, especially who have been in their homes for over fifty years. And so, just creating equitable solutions around development and how we handle people in our community, because we wanna be a part of the development too, and we wanna be a part of the town. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I promised her we would talk to DOT and see if we could do anything to help, but thank you for doing this. Appreciate it. Carrie Lee is next. Hi, Carrie Lee.
Good afternoon, everyone. Again, my name is Carrie Lee. I'm glad to be here. I wanna speak on two matters. I'm gonna make it very brief. And the first matter is about the road that I stay on, which is right off of Holly, right off of Sunset Lake Road. And I stay on a private road, which is part of the land that my father left us. So, it's a private road, which is Clyde Drive. Our road was paved, the resident that stays on that road, it's about six families. And we paved that road, we tried to pave it about three years ago. But due to the trash trucks and the recycling trucks, it has gotten very bad. It is worse than what it was before we started paving some of it. The potholes are getting larger, and we're having a hard time going into our neighborhood. And right now, what I'm here is to ask for some type of assistance, for the city to assist us with, to get our road in a good driving condition, in, you know, good condition where we don't have to worry about when we're going into our residence that we're worried about how large those holes are. So, when I say large hole, I mean a pothole. I mean, and when it rains, it gets worse. And right now, it is very, very bad. So, I'm asking for, you know, help to get our road back in some type of condition where it won't be a problem for the resident. And the next thing I wanna talk about is Sunset Lake Road and Stevenson Road. I'm sure if any of you live off of Holly Springs Road or off of 1010, not 1010, but Stevenson or either Sunset Lake Road, it is bad, going and coming. And I stay right off of, Clyde Drive is right off of Sunset Lake Road. And what I'm begging for, asking and pleading for, is a traffic light. At Sunset Lake and Stevenson Road, not only is it a dangerous spot, but waiting to get onto Sunset Lake Road off of Stevenson Road is getting to be terrible. I mean, you can sit there for five minutes in the afternoon. And I personally have waited. You come in, if you're on Stevenson Road, I say between 4:30 and 5 o'clock, you're gonna have a while to wait to get onto Sunset Lake Road. And because of that, we're having cars, you know, the cars on Sunset Lake Road don't stop, they don't yield whenever they see this long line, but cars are pulling out in front of those cars on Sunset Lake Road, and it is very, very dangerous. We've had accidents there, and before, I don't think we've ever had anyone to get killed. But I'm pleading, before someone gets killed, if we could get a traffic light put at that intersection between Sunset Lake Road and Stevenson Road. I guess I was very, very disturbed because I've been living on Sunset Lake Road for a long time. Whenever, I think there's a new shopping center right there at Holly Springs Road and Sunset Lake Road. A traffic light went up there as soon as that little mini mall was open. People are getting out very safe, and which is good. But to see the problem that we've had at Sunset Lake and Stevenson Road, and nothing has been done about it, that's what I'm asking for.
Thank you. I just, quick comment. I think that's in the plans. It's been slow, but I believe, am I correct?
With, I think with the possible, the development that's been
Right on the corner.
The last year or two over there, that's on the book.
And a widening.
(inaudible)
And Stevenson, yeah. I know where it is.
What's the street that you live on with the potholes?
Clyde.
Clyde?
Okay. Thank you. Josh Dunbar. Hi, Josh.
Hello, guys. Josh Dunbar, 120 Cliff Creek Drive in Holly Springs. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Today, I come on behalf of the Holly Springs Rotary Club. A little background, the Holly Springs Rotary Club and Rotary International has taken on a sustainability initiative to plant trees in their community. The Holly Springs Rotary Club took that up last year, and we've been working throughout the course of, I guess, last summer into this year, working with town staff to identify some areas within the community that we could possibly plant some trees, that have been all funded and donated by the members of the club. We've identified Wumble Park as that area, and about, identified about twenty places where we would look to plant some trees. As you guys are well aware, Ham Wumble was also a vital part to our club as a Holly Springs Rotary Club, and very active and supporter of that club. Given the fact that we're looking at Wumble, it came up that maybe it'd be nice to donate one of those trees and dedicate it in his honor. So, tonight, I come to you guys just for support in dedicating one of those trees. There wouldn't be anything grand, it'd just be a tree and maybe a sign in his honor. So, we're looking for, just looking for you guys' support in that. That's it. Any questions?
Great idea. Thank you, Josh.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, last but not least, I'm kinda familiar with what's coming up next, but I wanna make sure I got the names right. Kaylee Davis, did I say that right? All right, number one. Christina Davis. Is that right on that one? Close enough, right? All right, come down and tell us about some good news, or shall we say, exceptional news. And the name Samsung, they come to pass. This young lady spoke last time, and she did such a great job. She was on TV, too. And she told me that she enjoyed speaking, and now she's here again. And tell us your name again, so I got it right.
Kaylee.
And you are gonna tell us something about happened at the school not too long ago?
Yes.
Holly Road?
Yes.
Middle?
Yes.
Go.
Okay. So, we have recently won the national contest for top ten for Samsung Solve for Tomorrow. And our next step, and we have won, we have won $50,000 for our school. We, next, we are going to be going to Washington, no, we're going to be going to New York City, and we are going to be publicly speaking and presenting of what, of how we're going to improve bus safety. And we would like to win top three for national. And my friends are gonna go and hand you guys some slips. And this is gonna tell you how to get online and vote for our school to win the national contest.
And you can vote every day, is that correct?
Yes. We would very much encourage you to.
I voted three times today. I don't know. But go ahead. Anything else?
No. Nope.
Ms. Debbie, is there a flyer or something?
Yeah, that's what they're handing out.
They're handing out flyers now? Okay.
Yes.
Oh, I forgot, yeah, this is for, this is for community content. So, each page is now, the content is inter, and then this would give the main page and the other page. So, there's a school per page.
Great.
That's awesome.
Several of us saw this bus in action, what, it's three weeks ago now? Something like that?
Yes.
And it's incredible. And I'm so proud of all of you, placing you, to see what this bus does is it comes closer to this light. Different lights change, it gets bigger and bigger, and as you get close to what you might call an accident, which there has been some, matter of fact, there's been way too many, it flashes like crazy, right?
Yes.
And you were on, what, do you remember what television show you were on? Was it ABC?
We were on ABC Spectrum and WRL.
RAL, yeah, okay. Well, you did a great job, and I hope everybody votes often, it's one of the few times you can, and be legal. Thank you, sir. And let's give them a hand.
Thank you.
Hey, Kaylee, do you wanna introduce your teacher, one of the leaders of this project?
Absolutely. Good idea, Sherri.
This is Ms. Debbie Shaline. She has guided us through this entire thing and has been one of the best mentors we have had.
Excellent.
Nice.
I guess at this point in time, I will reluctantly close the public hearing, and we go to the item 6A, oath of office, annual board of adjustment and planning board appointees. And our town clerk, Linda McKinney, is going to do this, and we're gonna call up right now from the board of adjustment, reappointed Timothy Forrest and Jay McEno. I always say it wrong. McEno, close enough, right?
Mariko.
Mariko. I got the umlaut on the wrong place. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Good job, you guys. We'll be looking forward to doing this again soon.
(inaudible)
That was quite a thing to watch that bus, bring the acting board to life. And anybody missing that one, which they probably will, I will notice.
I'm Timothy Forrest.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a member of the board of adjustment.
As a member of the board of adjustment.
Of the town of Holly Springs, North Carolina.
So, help me God.
I'm Jay Mariko.
I'm Jay Mariko.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a member of the board of adjustment.
As a member of the board of adjustment.
Of the town of Holly Springs, North Carolina.
So, help me God.
I'm Morgan Lynam.
I'm Morgan Lynam.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a member of the board of adjustment.
As a member of the board of adjustment.
Of the town of Holly Springs, North Carolina.
Of the town of Holly Springs, North Carolina.
So, help me God. Thank you.
I'm Morgan Lynam.
I'm Morgan Lynam.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a member of the board of adjustment.
As a member of the board of adjustment.
Of the town of Holly Springs, North Carolina.
Of the town of Holly Springs, North Carolina.
So, help me God. Thank you.
I'm Morgan Lynam.
I'm Morgan Lynam.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a planning board member.
As a planning board member.
For the town of Holly Springs, North Carolina.
For the town of Holly Springs, North Carolina.
So, help me God.
All right. Now, I'd like to call to the bench, I mean, call on front. Town members reappointed, that would be tonight, Ernie Capico, good friend.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a member of the board of adjustment.
As a member of the board of adjustment.
Of the town of Holly Springs, North Carolina.
Of the town of Holly Springs, North Carolina.
So, help me God.
All right. Now, I'd like to call to the bench, I mean, call on front. Town members reappointed, that would be tonight, Ernie Capico, good friend.
I'm Ernie Capico.
I'm Ernie Capico.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a planning board member.
As a planning board member.
For the town of Holly Springs, North Carolina.
For the town of Holly Springs, North Carolina.
So, help me God.
All right. Also, just for the record, Sean McGrath couldn't make it tonight, neither could Dana Ryback, so they'll be taking the oath on the March 19th meeting, okay? Thank you for that. Thank you, Linda. Item 8B, wonder why all these wonderful gentlemen are in the back in the black uniforms for the fire department, in case you didn't know. There's only one here that doesn't have a black shirt on, but, oh, two! There's two here. I joke, Cinder's black, so whatever, all right. This is recognition, this is, Jen, item eight, or, yeah, 6B, recognition of participants in a cardiac arrest save, and I think the chief is gonna tell us a little bit about it, and then we'll take it from there. Chief Smith.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for a few minutes of your time. For those of you who in the audience that might not know who I am, I'm Leroy Smith. I'm your fire chief for the town of Holly Springs. A couple fun facts for you before we get started. Your heart pumps about 2,000 gallons of blood through your body every day. Your heart has a complex electrical system, much like that in your car, that regulates the rhythms and the beating of your heart. When a cardiac arrest happens, all of those things stop. When a cardiac arrest happens, every second counts. Over 400,000 people outside of a medical facility suffer from a cardiac arrest every year. On average, one in 10 victims survive. It's not a, not a really good percentage. The majority of the survivors receive immediate care from bystander or first responder CPR. If treatment is not provided within 10 minutes, the chance of survival is close to zero. Some other keys to survival are obviously immediate recognition that there's a cardiac arrest, initiation of CPR, defibrillation, advanced EMS care, and hospital transport. One of the better parts of my job is being able to watch these gentlemen in the back of the room work. If you've ever witnessed a cardiac arrest, I can only attribute it to like a NASCAR race. If you see a car pull in the pit, and the crew jumps out, and they start changing tires, and fueling the car, and cleaning the windshield, that's how these guys work. It's a, it's a well-oiled machine. To the layperson that's just watching, it looks like organized chaos. But make no mistake, they are very well-trained, they are very focused, and they know what they're doing. One of the initiatives I put in place with the help of the members of my department and Joe Horasty a few years ago was a component of bringing citizens in and teaching them CPR. We offer, this is my shameless plug for the night, we offer hands-free CPR, which is not a certification class, but it'll teach you what to do in case somebody you know has a cardiac arrest. And then we also teach a full certification class. I'm gonna have Joe come up and speak just a few minutes or a few seconds about, about our CPR program and let you guys know how you can get into the program, and then I'll come back, and I got a couple more things to tell you. So, this is Joe Horasty, who is our fire life safety educator, and his more famous counterpart, Cinder.
Yeah, everybody knows Cinder. You don't know me, right?
We know you both.
So, absolutely, we do offer free, hands-only CPR training through the fire department. The idea is, it's just like Chief Smith said, when that bystander can provide CPR to someone in cardiac arrest, it increases, it almost doubles their chance of survival. It's amazing the difference. And we offer that class, like I said, for free. If somebody wants a certification class, we do those classes at cost. Basically, we charge you for the book that we're required to give you, the card that we're required to give you, and what we consume during that class. As it currently stands, it's $35 per person. A lot of times, you will find these classes for $120. So, we do offer that at extremely discounted rate. Check with Holly Springs Parks and Recreation on their website or at any of their facilities. Excuse me, any of their facilities. They manage the marketing of the registration and collecting the money for that. And all of that money goes directly back into the program. We don't, there's no profit made from that whatsoever. So, it truly can make a difference. If you have any questions whatsoever about these programs, you can contact us through the main number at the fire department or through our safe line, which is 919-577-SAFE. That's 7233. Thank you.
Is Cinder gonna speak?
He can.
Maybe, but, I heard it's Cinder earlier.
He only knows a few words, though. And Joe has really done a good job with that program, but out on the street, it wasn't for the efforts of the gentlemen that are standing in the back, we wouldn't be here tonight. So, one thing, the first thing I'd like to do is I'd like to ask Robin Forgione, how'd I do there, to come on up. And as she's coming up, I wanna let you know, our new town manager, Randy Harrington, had tasked us, department heads, a few weeks ago with coming up with some innovative ways that we can improve our service delivery to the town. And one of the initiatives I discussed with him is a program that's called PulsePoint. Since that day that we talked, I found out that Wake County is going to roll out county-wide a program called PulsePoint. So, what that is, is once you get trained in CPR, PulsePoint will be an app that you can put on your phone. So, let's just imagine, you're hungry, you're sitting at home, and you wanna go have some eggplant Parmesan from Olive Garden, and you and your family go sit there in Olive Garden, and you're eating, and the food's really good, but your phone goes off, and down the street at Chili's is a person that's in cardiac arrest. The app on your phone will show you where the closest AED is and allow you to get to that person in cardiac arrest faster than we would, 30 seconds or so. Time is the difference, remember, every second counts. It also has a meter on there that'll help guide you through doing CPR, and it has quick questions and answers. So, the public is really the one can help us make an impact. So, that's why I called Ms. Forgione.
I didn't mess up the name, did I?
Up. I would like her, Ms. Forgione was the first person to initiate CPR on the incident that we're talking about, and I would like her just to give you a little bit of insight on what it's like to be the first person to do this and what she went through.
Hi, my name is Robin Forgione, and I was invited here tonight by my friend, Chris Vasquez.
And I would like her just to give you a little bit of insight on what it's like to be the first person to do this and what she went through.
No pressure. Hi, my name is Robin Forgione, and I was invited here tonight by my friend, Chris Vasquez. I think he'll be mentioned later, because I gave him CPR, and, you know, we're... He's very fortunate that he's still here. And it's kind of emotional, and I feel a little awkward talking about this, but I was asked by Joe, because he's the one who is doing the education, just for some insight for what it feels like to be on the scene, what educationally could be added to the classes, because I've been CPR-trained for the last probably eight to 12 years because of a part-time job that requires that we have that certification. And so, it's very different in real life than what it is like when you're doing the certification training. And I just think that it is hopefully nothing that anybody ever has to do, but being able to kind of get your wherewithal to figure out that a person needs CPR, because the skills are there when you're trained, you kind of know what the skills are. At least, I think you do. If you go to a certification, you're going to know how to do the chest compressions. But it's the actual what happens in the moment when you see that. And I was out with my friend and my new friend, Chris, and my other new friend, who's not here, who actually was beside me the whole time when we were doing CPR. And it was just something that you just don't expect. You just don't expect someone to go up, go down. And so, I don't know how much... I don't want to give a lot of, like, lots of detail, because it's...
Hey, you just gave me the perfect... Perfect lead-in. We got a little act going here. So, Mr. Vasquez, who's sitting in the back, Chris, is a survivor from a cardiac arrest. And you can jump in if there's anything you'd like to add. And I'm going to bring Chris up here in a second and let him speak. So, y'all were out for a bike ride. Chris's fiancee, Fran... Fran, you can wave. Is a triathlete. So, imagine Chris trying to keep up with a triathlete. She does a whole lot of physical stuff and everything. So, they were out for a bike ride, and Chris suffered a sudden cardiac arrest. Not because of her.
Assisted with.
So, Robin, part of the reason I wanted to bring you up is I want to recognize you because you saved Chris's life. Your intervention is what gave us the ability, or the crews in the back, the ability to intervene. So, this incident was on January 1st, and it was on Wood Creek Road. So, they were a little bit far out of town, but Chris jumped right in, and interestingly enough, she gave us a little tidbit of what happened downstairs. And Fran is the coach. You do what she says, boom, boom, boom. At that moment in time, when this incident happened, it took Fran to a different place, and Robin took over. And she directed traffic and controlled the scene until we showed up. So, Robin, for your efforts, I'm going to give you a Holly Springs Fire Department challenge coin, which is reserved for people who display courage and bravery as a member of the public and help us. Very few people have these, so if you get ever pulled over or something, show this to the police officer.
That doesn't work. Oh, I shouldn't have said that. Excuse me.
Anyway, you just... Very, very well done, and it's an honor to have met you and talked to you about your efforts, so. With that said, I guess we'll bring up the man of the hour, Chris, who is accompanied tonight to our town council meeting by his fiancee Fran, who was not the cause of his cardiac arrest. I got the $10 to... She told me to say that. And his two children, Nick and Sarah. If you guys want to come up, you're more than welcome. If you wanted to stand up and wave. But I want to let Mr. Vasquez, if you'd like to say something.
The most important thing is to let you know that my family made me promise to keep it under the enforced three-minute limit, okay? So, we talk about heroes, right? I didn't have anything to do with this. All I did was fall over during a ride, and one hero saved my life, and then these people showed up to continue that process. And I'm still here. What happened to me has an extremely low survival rate. So, the efforts of the fire department and the community to teach CPR to folks, I encourage everyone to take the class, basically, you know, helped save my life. And then these heroes, who we don't think about, who we don't really think about, I'm sorry, guys, until something bad happens and you all show up. And organized chaos, again, I really wasn't paying attention, but from what I was told, swarmed over me and performed some insane medical procedures and continued the work that Robin did and saved me and got me to the hospital, where another group of heroes took over. So, there is no way I'm ever going to be able to say thank you enough for what you've done. No way. Just please know that. I'm enormously grateful. And Robin, please know that you always have to ride with me from now on, okay? And I'm going to try not to cry, but I can't thank you enough. And the community, whatever you can do to support CPR in the community is God. You just have to do it. So, thank you.
Good job.
So, I know a lot of times, we come up here in front of the town council, people come up and fuss at you guys about traffic, about growth, about good things, about bad things. But this is really what community's all about. And Mr. Vasquez sort of alluded to a couple of things. He said, "Hey, how supportive is the town council of you? Do I need to go up there and really embellish so you guys can get more money?" So, I just want my boss to know that I didn't tell him to get me three new fire trucks and new fire stations and stuff like that. I thought his story was more important than our story. So, Mr. Vasquez, I want to also provide you with an honorary challenge coin for being a survivor. It's not often that somebody comes back and says, "Thank you." I mean, we go about our jobs, or these guys go about their jobs. My days of being involved in stuff like this are a little bit behind me, but I do go. These guys just tell me to get out of the way. They know what they're doing, and they do a phenomenal job. And I wanted to provide you with that challenge coin, because on the way home from the hospital, him and Fran stopped at the firehouse and wanted to say, "Thank you." He was still coming... He was coming... I hadn't even been home yet. So, with that being said, I would like to recognize Battalion Chief Don Hussey, Captain Jason Parrish. Come on up front, guys. Newly-promoted Lieutenant Robbie Wilkins, Protection Engineer Nick Richman, firefighter Mike Costello, firefighter Matt Dillon, and firefighter Spencer Stewart, for their actions that helped save a life. Okay, you guys can go ahead to the back if you want, but I appreciate it. I know you don't get to stand up here that often. Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Sure. I'll be right back there. A couple of things Mr. Vasquez shared with us. We met downstairs in the Holloman Room around 5:30 for a little bit of private time. He asked us, "How come he had so many holes in him? When he got out of the hospital, he couldn't drink anything because it kept coming out of all a bunch of different places." So, a lot of the medical procedures that were provided on the scene, they had never seen before. And to see not only these guys work and support EMS, which provides the advanced level of care, a couple of things that they did. Mr. Vasquez was shocked by an automatic defibrillator three times prior to transport to the hospital. CPR and advanced life support was on the scene, was conducted for 30 minutes. Have to maintain a pulse rate for 10 minutes before he gets transported. They also put two needles into his shins to help administer medications and lower the body temperature. All of this took place on Wood Creek Road at the scene where he fell off of his bike. So, it was just an amazing effort. Mr. Vasquez did most of the work, and... But these guys, it's, like I said, it's the best part of my job. I can't brag about them enough. They train... EMS is 80% of what we do. And they train formally eight hours or so a month, and they're phenomenal at this. Like I said, I'm not kidding. When they say, "Stay out of the way," I stand there and hold a radio or make sure they have towels to wipe the sweat off of them. They don't want me interfering, because I'll mess it up. But they are amazing. So, again, I'd just like to give them a round of applause and thank you guys for your time.
Done a great job, great story. Mr. Vasquez, many happy years. Thank you for coming and thank you for speaking, both of you. Bye-bye.
And, you know, it kind of goes to show, I know Mr. Vasquez and his fiancee Fran for years. Healthiest people I've ever met in my life. Our kids play soccer. It just, you know, it's not just people that look like this that it happens to, so it's an amazing story.
Just a minute. Okay, going to Agenda 7A, pre-budget public hearing, I think, our town manager and Cory Peterson. Want to speak? You're on, Per.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that very much. Tonight, we want to have a pre-budget public hearing, and with that, I'm going to invite Cory Peterson, our budget and management analyst, to come on up. Cory's going to help me with the presentation tonight. In fact, he's probably going to do the bulk of it, but I'm going to do some of the intro slides and make a few comments here at the start. I think, as you probably know, the cities and counties in North Carolina, by law, are required to have at least one public budget hearing that is required to occur, at least one between when the manager provides the recommended budget and then between the time then and when you adopt a budget. So, this is an optional opportunity, but I think it's a very proactive opportunity, and it's an opportunity for us at the start of the budget process to get any additional input by the community and by residents that we can all take into consideration as we move through the budget process. So, tonight, with the purpose, what we'd like to do is outline current town services, just to give a basic overview for the benefit of the community, and then talk a little bit about the draft strategic plan. And these two pieces, the budget, staff has been starting to work on this over the last couple of months. And then for the community council, you all and the mayor have been working on your strategic plan really since November. And so, we want to give a, just a very draft update on some key components of that and get any input from the community. So, that's what we have in store here before we invite residents to come on up. So, next slide. One of the things I'd like to point out, and we realize this, that when residents see their government, they really just see one entity. And with that, it's hard to distinguish what is it that the state does, what is it that the county does, what is it that schools do, and what is the town's responsibility? And so, the purpose of this slide is really just to provide a basic overview of what is it that when residents pay their tax dollars and fees, these are the core services that we provide in the community. Those include yard waste collection, garbage and recycling collection, land use planning, streets and infrastructure, parks and greenways. We have economic development as well, of course, police, water and sewer, athletics, and then, as you saw here earlier tonight, fire services. So, those are some of the core components that, when you think of your local government, what the town of Holly Springs provides, these are those basic services that are supported by tax dollars and fees. With that, let me go ahead and transition into Cory Peterson. He's going to talk a little bit more about the budget itself, in terms of a high-level overview of what, where our revenues come from and where our expenditures go, and then to highlight what you have worked on so far as it relates to your strategic plan. The one thing I would note on the strategic plan before Cory gets to it, and we're going to be coming back to you at the April workshop to have a deep dive into the work that staff is currently doing on developing some initiatives that will feed up to the goals and the strategic priority areas that you have outlined. There is one outstanding piece that we left a little bit with some homework to do, and that's related to economic development and part of the conversation around sports and leisure, depending on what level of articulation we may or may not want to do on that particular area. So, we plan to come back on that one and say a little bit more, but you won't see that articulated here tonight. Just wanted to note that at this point. Cory, you want to take us to the next few slides?
Great, thank you. And I just wanted to say that, you know, it's kind of hard having to follow kids-winning contests and life-saving stories from firefighters and then have to talk about the budget.
You bet.
So, I'll do my best to keep us all entertained. So, this slide right here, just to show kind of the town overall budget, as you can see, it's just about $56 million. And it's largely made up between two funds, the utility fund and the general fund. Now, that utility fund, I don't want to use, you know, too much kind of budgetary terminology and put everyone to sleep, but this is a proprietary fund, and the way to kind of describe that is, it's kind of business-like. These are services that, you know, you pay a fee, you receive that service, and typically, it's, you know, its budget follows that fee, that input of revenue. So, the general fund, as you can see, is the bulk of the budget. That's about $38 million aspect of that 56-figure. It's largely tax dollar-supported, and again, this is the bulk of where I want to focus on this conversation, because this is where mostly your tax dollars go in towards. So, this diagram, there's a lot going on here, I recognize, but I'll try to kind of break it down a little bit. On the left side of the diagram, the revenues, that's your money coming in. This is the, for the general fund. This is where the sources of revenues coming in, supporting general fund activities. And then on the right, those are the kind of expenses, the money coming out. On the, about three-fourths of that revenue coming in, as you can see, comes from various taxes. The biggest one being ad valorem, which is just a kind of fancy way of saying property tax. And then the other, second-largest, other taxes, that's kind of like your sales tax and such. The rest of your revenues come from a variety of permits and fees. These are things that are kind of, I would say, more voluntary. So, if my daughter wants to play soccer, I register her, I pay a fee, she plays soccer. So, the majority, though, of the revenues, as you see, comes from these two different tax sources. So, I want to show you where do those tax dollars go, because it's not quite associated to, say, parks and recs fees, which would go into parks and recs. These are just kind of the taxpayer dollars. So, what part of your taxpayer dollar goes to what service? So, if we break down every dollar that you pay in taxes and kind of give you which, you know, which part of your dollar goes to what government service, this is kind of the general breakdown here. About .37 cents of that dollar goes towards public safety. That's your police, your fire, just like the fine gentleman we just saw up here just performing. So, .37 cents of every taxpayer dollar goes towards those public safety services. Next, your second-largest aspect, general government. So, .21 cents of that dollar goes towards kind of these central service aspects. They kind of support all other services in a way, your town manager, town clerk, town attorney, and kind of the centralized functions like finance, communications, human resources, information technology. The third-largest function is debt service. 15 cents goes towards the town debt. Then, fourth-largest, 12 cents goes towards parks and recs. And then what I want to say about kind of parks and recs and the next two, public works and development, is that these three functions, they might have some fees and such that go towards funding them as well, but this is the taxpayer aspect that is divvied up between those different government functions. So, as I mentioned, 10 cents of that dollar goes towards public works, garbage, recycling, street maintenance, yardways. And then lastly, 5 cents goes towards more development functions. And the other part I would mention is that some of these other government functions also have a utility fund aspect, so this is just that general fund part of the budget. So, now that we've had kind of a brief overview of the town services and the current budget, we can look forward to next year's priorities and budget. And really, strategic planning is a tool that helps set those priorities in a way. Budgeting, I like to think of, is kind of like building a house, and strategic planning is kind of the blueprint for that house. It kind of helps set the direction for that process. And I believe, as Randy mentioned, the mayor and town council have been working over the past few months to set that vision for the town's strategic plan, and this is a very much still a draft process that hasn't been approved by council yet. But this is the kind of where we're at at the moment in terms of setting that vision and setting that blueprint for next year's town budget. So, the draft town vision at the moment is Holly Springs offers an unmatched quality of life that reflects the joys of small-town living in a safe, family-friendly community that residents and businesses are proud to call home. So, to accomplish that vision for the town, the mayor and town council have identified five draft strategic priority areas, and these are the five areas that we need to be successful in order to meet that draft vision statement. The five areas are economic prosperity and diversity, engaged, healthy, and active community, organizational excellence, responsible and balanced growth, and it's safe and friendly. So, under these strategic priority areas, the mayor and town council have drafted a potential kind of goal statements. And these goals, it's as we kind of move down to the more, from the 30,000-foot view to, say, the 300-foot view, these are the goals that we need to be successful in in order to fulfill that strategic area. So, under the economic prosperity and diversity strategic area, the three goals that we've identified here are enhance, attract, and engage diverse economic development opportunities. Number two, create a vibrant downtown center. And number three, seek partnerships to drive economic development. And then also, as Randy mentioned, some of these aspects are, you know, still to be, you know, defined a little more, and that these are still in... you know, defined a little more, and that these are still in draft form. So next, the strategic priority area is engaged, healthy, and active community. The goals identified for this area are improve, expand, and seek partnerships for recreational and cultural opportunities. Number two, promote and develop parks, recreation, and public access to a variety of events and activities. And number three, develop community events that ensure wide appeal of activities for residents. The third strategic priority area, organizational excellence, this is the one that I would say is maybe a little more kind of internally focused. So in the first goal, we talk about as an employer of choice, that employer being the town. So this is more of that organizational excellence for town operations. So as I mentioned, as an employer of choice, retain and recruit a highly skilled workforce, leverage technology and innovative business approaches to enhance customer service and improve business efficiencies, expand community engagement, and ensure financial stewardship. The fourth strategic priority area, responsible and balanced growth, the goals are plan, maintain, and invest in infrastructure, develop land uses that provide for sustainable growth while balancing small-town characteristics with economic growth, promote sustainability initiatives to protect natural resources and preserve community historical and environmental assets, and partner with neighbors to promote smart regional infrastructure investments. The final priority area, safe and friendly, the goals are maintain the town's high level of safety, plan for adequate public infrastructure that promotes safe community, enhance capability to communicate public safety messages to the public, and lastly cultivate creative and welcoming cultural events and engagements that appeal to a wide variety of residents. So again, these are the draft goals associated with these strategic priority areas. For next steps, so between now and the first date here, April 9th, town employees will take these draft goals and draft some initiatives that are more kind of the action items to fulfill those goals. So kind of propose what actions we would need to take to meet those goals. And then if we meet those goals and we meet the strategic priority area, and those five areas would fulfill the town vision. So the proposed next steps are April 9th, review the draft strategic plan with proposed initiatives. And April 16th, the aim is to, for council adoption of the strategic plan. And then that strategic plan could help inform kind of the budget development process. So for May 14th, the recommended budget presentation that would kind of branch forward and connect the budget to those strategic priorities laid out by the mayor and town council.
Great. Thank you, Cory. Appreciate that very much. And also, I do want to recognize Mary Hogan and Patty Dresson, who are also instrumental in leadership on the budget process and very heavily involved and engaged on that as well. So thank you to them, too.
Thanks, everybody.
Any questions of Cory or Randy before we go to the open the public hearing? No? Seeing none, we're good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. At this point in time, I'm open to public hearing, and we have one person signed up. An old friend of mine, he's not as old as I am, but a good friend and a former council member, Hank Dixon. Come on down.
Almost as gray as you, though.
I like that.
Hank Dixon, 504 Sandy Point Way in Holly Springs. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. Harrington, Mr. Shifano, and Ms. McKinney. And actually, it gives me special pleasure, actually, speaking during this particular public hearing, because well over a decade ago, I actually made the suggestion that we have these pre-budget public hearings. So it's actually kind of interesting that I'm speaking at one right now. So thank you for the opportunity. I actually have two recommendations for the upcoming budget, and actually, both of them fit within your strategic plan that I just saw up top there. And you each should have an email from me for each of these. The first is I'm recommending that the town council set aside about $150,000, $200,000 for a direct greenway connection to one of our most utilized park facilities, which is Ting Park. I've already made this recommendation to the Parks and Recreation Board, seeking their recommendation. I'm not where that stands with them now. But a greenway connection from Muses Mill Court in, and it's a cul-de-sac in Oak Hall, that will provide immediate access to the park, specifically at the backside of the park. And really, the intent of greenways is to not only link sections of town on a natural path, but to also link people to parks, and that this will definitely accomplish that. The right-of-way at the end of the cul-de-sac is, you know, already owned by Holly Springs, and of course, the land, it directly connects to the land in Ting Park. Based on what I found on Wake County property records, I have to assume that it's accurate. And so no condemnation of land is necessary to connect to this, the existing sidewalk on Muses Mill Court to the greenway. And it's basically a straight shot directly to a paved greenway stub in Ting Park. So it shows the intent to link it to Oak Hall. It doesn't necessarily have to be a paved path. It, you would just have to basically take out a number of trees and have a mulch path from the cul-de-sac to the existing greenway. And also, a footbridge will be necessary at the bottom of the slope to cross a small stream there as well. This small 10th of a mile connection provides more benefits than the cost. So I encourage you to consider that in your budget deliberations. The second is I recommend that the town council place aside a small amount of funding to officially add a town-owned parcel located between Evergreen View Drive, Holly Meadow Drive, and Rivendell Drive into the town park system. These are all streets in the Holly Glen subdivision. I'm not recommending that any special facilities be added to this park, to this parkland or to this land, other than maybe providing signage, designating that the park is part of the park system and subject to the rules of the town parks. And to, at a high level, a public park is a permitted use in R-10 zoning. Now, this section is not R-10. It's actually a zone PUD or P-U-D. But the surrounding use is consistent with R-10 zoning. For what is, I found in the Udo picnic grounds in the R-10 zoning district, the parking requirements are three and a half spaces per acre. This particular parcel has 1.7 acres, so there would be a need for about six spaces. And this parking can be accommodated as off-street parking on either Rivendell or Evergreen View. The ADA requirement is one space. I think it's one space per 1 to 25, you know, regular spaces in an off-street parking lot. So I think it would only require one on-street space. So I don't feel that this particular project would exceed $10,000. I think $10,000 is probably a very, very high ceiling for it, but for signage, as well as what wouldn't have to be done to maybe put parking lines in the street for parking spaces, as well as maybe a curb cut for the handicap spot. So thank you for your consideration of these projects. These are of, you know, when you look at the size of the budget, they are of minimal cost, but when you consider your strategic plan and goals, this investment of probably under $200,000 will accomplish, definitely accomplish what you're trying to create here in Holly Springs. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks, Randy.
Thank you, Hank. Appreciate it. At this point in time, we're going to close the public hearing. I do have one comment, though. Sig Hutchison, County Commissioner, we've talked about some of our goals on greenways, and I think we're going to have some help. I want to leave it at that because I don't have specifics yet, but Sig is very anxious to seek greenways, not only in our town, but all the towns. And I think he would be willing to talk further on this, and so just kind of let you know that I think we got a partner there, okay? Anything else on this subject? All good? Thank you. Gene, item 8A. The consent agenda, Mayor Protam.
Mr. Mayor, one second. On the consent, I'd like to pull item 8A, which is the setting of the grant committee meeting for March 20th. I had a late break in conflict that I won't be able to make that meeting, so I'd like to ask the other members of the committee if we could look at rescheduling that.
The grant?
Yeah, the grant meeting on the 20th. Is that right?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor, you mean 8I?
8I.
8I.
Yeah. How did I say A? Sorry, 8I.
All right.
8I.
It could have been.
Okay, so we're going to remove 8I, correct?
Right.
Okay, so regards to the consent agenda, we'll remove action item 8I and approve the rest.
Second.
Let's move it in, second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing, Nancy. Item number 10, new business, there is none. So we'll go to item 11, which is other business, and I just have a couple of things. I always mention crosswalk safety, we're making progress, but I got to tell you a story that I didn't quite believe had happened. We were talking to the legislature yesterday, and there were four mayors there, one of them having to be Nancy McFarland from Raleigh. And this subject of crosswalk safety came up in conversation with the legislature. And I said what we've done in town. And I asked Nancy, and I'm not being demeaning at all, but I just want you to know that sometimes we're ahead of the chase here. I said, how many of these type of crosswalk safety items do you have in Raleigh? Which is a pretty big town, right? So I recommended strongly to her that we find these very effective, not perfect, but very effective, and we're going to do more. And we're ahead of Raleigh, so I like that part. A little precious, perhaps, but I'm happy about that. Other than that, the robotics presentation, was it last week? Goes by fast.
This week.
At high school, they have won state prize now, and I think they're going further to Houston or someplace like that for the, this is just an incredible sight over there to see kids in high school making robots. I asked if I could take it home, and no, they wouldn't let me do it. But these robots are incredible, and as are the kids. And they have a couple volunteers that are older that helped them with this. And I think all of us, almost all of us were there with this presentation. Wanted to mention to them, they're just doing a great job. That's all I got. Next.
I have a couple of things. One, just got some bittersweet news that Principal Pittman, Brian Pittman at the high school, his last day is Friday. He's moving up in the world, so, yeah, I don't know if it's with Central Officer DPI, but he's been, yeah, he's taken something else, but it's happening pretty quick. So I think Dr. Tom Dixon will be the interim principal, so just heard about that. That's kind of exciting for Mr. Pittman. It's kind of sad for Holly Springs. I also wanted to ask about, hearing about the families on West Holly Springs Road and the issues that are going on. We knew that there would be some land acquisition when it came to widening the road, but how, I mean, can we look into or can we get filled in at some point? I know tonight you might not have it, on what is going on there and if, you know, how the homes are being impacted.
So nothing right now, the plans aren't complete, the engineering plans aren't complete, so we don't have any, and I believe the engineering staff's going to come to you with some alternates.
Yeah, we're just at 25% design on the plans, and we're still trying to work out some options as far as impacts to homeowner, so it's something we're working on, and we'll be in touch in the near future on that.
So as, I mean, I'd hope that we will be, like, filled in if things start to get to the point, I mean, I just want to be kept up to date on this, because I didn't know that the impact, you know, I apologize for not knowing that the impact was that significant, or if it was, it may not be, but however it's going to end up, I'd like us to be kept up to date on it.
We're not going to start land acquisition without coming to you.
Right, right.
Totally agree with that, good point. Did you miss that comment?
Oh, he said they wouldn't do any land acquisition or anything like, without coming to us first, anyway. Is that, yeah, but, see, because this is, we knew that this was, you know, things would be happening where we have to take some land, but I didn't know how much it would be affecting you, so I just wanted to make sure we're up to date, as that happens. Okay. Oh, sure.
See, we didn't know that.
Not by the town.
Not by, it's not us, D O T.
What'd you say?
What?
She's on this side.
Okay.
Now, aren't you on, we talked, aren't you on this side of Sunset Lake Road, this way?
I'm on the right side.
Yeah, but I mean, go to Sunset Lake Road, you're coming in from Fuquay, you turn right or you turn left? Take a right, okay. And it could be I-540.
That's the 540.
Oh, the 540, oh.
That may be, I'll check into this, but that may be a different thing.
Okay.
That's a different project.
Yeah, it's a different project. So if we, I just wanted to-
Turnpike authority that's giving that.
That's not, so it's not us, but if it ever was, I know you guys would let us know all that. But I do appreciate you letting us know, though, that that is happening.
Of course, you're still going to talk.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I can just add to that, that one of the things that you heard back at your retreat was when we talked about the bonds projects, that community engagement is a really important component of that. And so particularly along Holly Springs Road, where we know we're going to have a lot of impact, we will have community engagement sessions to get the public's input on the front side and then continue that conversation as we refine and understand what the plans are for those improvements.
I think I know why I told you I wasn't informed of this when we first talked, wasn't trying to be defensive, but that's a little different issue that we'll work on, too.
Randy, and I think we learned with the hospital project, for this community, we might need to knock on doors, and it's not necessarily just posting.
A different type.
Yes, we have to make sure we engage with communication. Communication helps in a hard situation, so, you know, that's.
Okay, what else?
Also, I wanted to, speaking of housing, Randy, about maybe at, you know, some Tuesday that we may have available sometime, but start to talk about, a little bit more about our affordable housing, our workforce housing, where we want to go with that. You know, we always have developers coming to us and be able, nice for us to be able to offer, you know, what we would like them to do and what we could do to make this work together. And I know there are, I know Councilwoman Kelly has gone to many affordable housing things, and Randy has mentioned that he maybe has some people that can, you know, start to look into this. But I think we need to kind of just talk about it a little bit sooner or later, if that's somewhere we're going to go. That might not even be something that we do, but.
Is that part of, I had brought up for the workshop next week, we were going to talk a little bit about that, weren't we?
At this point, it's not planned for the workshop next week, but one possible idea that, as a path forward, I am aware of some other communities that have engaged, the Triangle J Council of Governments, as well as some other entities, to come in and do an overview of what is affordable housing, workforce housing, from an educational and kind of level-setting standpoint of defining it and everybody understanding what it is, because there's a variety of perceptions and components and issues that are related to it. If the council would like to have a session on that, I can try to coordinate with some groups and so that you have just a good level-setting type initial conversation, and then from there you can decide where you'd like to go.
Just to piggyback on that, at the legislator's meeting yesterday, that was another subject that came up, and there are several people there, senators and representatives, who are working on that also. And we talked about the definition, and we need a little help with that, but they have now a committee that's going to be working on that, too, so we will piggyback with them, I'm sure, and get their ideas, too. But I think overall, the feeling was we need to do something, and we need to do it as quickly as we can. And it was a long session, and that's fine. So we will have some help on this. Okay?
Last thing, I promise, is I don't know up here how many of you guys are CPR certified.
Are what?
CPR certified.
It's been a while. Mine expired again.
Yeah, of course. So I would like to say maybe, again, one of those free Tuesday nights, maybe a fourth Tuesday of the month sometime, that we have a-
Session?
Have a session, have Joe or Chief get us certified. It's $35, you know, well spent. So I'd like to look into picking a date for that. I mean, you know, if that's something you all want to do.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Okay, what else?
Just a big shout-out to Chief Leroy and Joe Horasty.
Just a big shout-out to Chief Leroy and Joe Horasty. Daylight Savings is this weekend.
Oh, yeah.
And it's a great opportunity for residents to check your fire alarms, make sure your batteries are in check. Chief came out to my house this past week, and I know our lives are busy, and I think all of them weren't working. Correct me if you were there. Correct? Right. So, yeah, and again, I was somewhat embarrassed with that one, Chief, but I do want to thank you, and if residents have questions and issues with the fire alarms, they should contact the fire department's non-emergency number.
Right. Five six seven six.
Right. And, again, thank you very much, because, you know, like I said, our lives are busy, and, you know, sometimes you've just got to take a stop and do a check there. And like I said, it's Daylight Savings this coming Sunday, and it's a great opportunity for residents to check their fire alarms, to make sure that they're all working properly. That's all I have. Thanks.
I see Christine Quanty's in the audience tonight. I wanted to thank the Chamber of Commerce for a fabulous banquet a week ago. It was great to highlight all of the businesses in our community and see how much they give back. The awards were great to recognize across many spectrums in terms of volunteer, and thank you for all the work that you do. And it's great that we have so much engagement with the businesses in our town. It was a great event. And happy anniversary, 25th anniversary.
That's right.
The Chamber for Holly Springs.
Oh, the Chamber, yeah.
It's amazing, because I know 25 years ago, there weren't a lot of businesses, so it's amazing how far they've come with the program. Excellent job.
See, I thought that was your age, Christine.
Am I?
What else?
I hate to do this because he's already having a big night, but thanks to Chief Smith for organizing a tour of the Harris plant last week. Myself, Mr. Harrington, Mr. Chase, and the chief were all down at the Harris nuclear plant, got a nice tour of the facility, their operations, met the team, understood their side of things when it comes to evacuation routes and what we hear in the public, and got a lot of good information. Very informative tour. If you haven't done it, I encourage the rest of my peers to get down there and see that as well. But thanks, Chief, for setting that up. I learned a lot, got a lot of good information, and just grateful for the opportunity.
Makes you feel pretty safe. These did me.
Yeah, and I know all this stuff, Chief, but you've been very busy this last, was it, week and a half? Walls and fires.
My house.
Thank you.
Your house.
Yeah, your house, yep. Thank you to all your guys, gals.
To piggyback on what Tom just said, I'll tell you a similar story, so don't feel bad, okay? I had one of those at night, beep, 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 beep. It was driving me crazy. I checked all my smoke alarms, I changed the batteries, I could hear it, we couldn't figure out where it was. Joe came out, we walked and walked and walked, and Joe said, "I don't think that's a fire alarm." I said, "Well, what would it be?" It's one of those CO2 alarms.
Yeah.
They sound a lot like a fire alarm.
Yep, still important.
So we fixed that real quick. It took me almost a day to figure out where it was, thanks to him, so just on top of what you said. Anything else?
Real briefly, just want to thank all staff involved with the Planet Palooza that happened this past four or five days. And a lot of effort, a lot of time, a lot of planning was done to pull that off, and it was, I had a great time attending many of those meetings and the wrap-up last night and look forward to that going forward.
Anything else? All good? Managers report.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. I have three items. The first one, a little bit piggybacking on Mr. Villardson, the, yeah, recognizing again that the planning staff, also the public who came out and really did a great job, and I think we had a lot of varied perspectives from the community, and that was very helpful in the process. I want to recognize the community for helping us in this effort, which is helping to shape our community. The second item, Councilwoman Kelly had requested a report on, related to some tree trimming and removal that has occurred here recently on Holly Springs Road, related to the Downton Square and Savannah Place developments. And just want to share a little bit of background on that and go through a few key things. The reason for the tree trimming is really twofold here. One, both those developments have existing power lines that are adjacent to Holly Springs Road, and they need to be moved back from the road as it relates to the second piece, which is road widening, which will occur, particularly turn lanes that will be going into the subdivision. So those two particular reasons, from a development standpoint, were the reasons why the trees were trimmed back and trimmed or removed altogether. The, a couple other components, there was a question around the tree preservation ordinance, and does that apply or whatnot? In this particular case, it does not. These two subdivision developments were approved prior to your approval of the tree ordinance. So from that particular standpoint, it does not apply in this particular situation. And as a little side note to that, based off of when you approved that ordinance, it's probably going to be nine to 18 months before our first next subdivisions that might come through where that ordinance would apply, and then you start seeing that tree save percentage in those particular developments. So just give you a little bit of background on that. The area, though, that was removed will be planted back with trees and shrubs per the planning and zoning landscaping requirements that are in the development plan, so those will come back. I want to also add that over the course of today, this week, I've had some really good conversations, productive conversations with the Duke Energy Government Liaison, and those have been very helpful and productive. I want to recognize that. They, about the concern associated with the extent of the trimming and tree removals. From what I understand from our liaison, Duke Energy's Urban Forester met with the developer surveyor today, and they did review the tree trimming and removal work by the contractor. And Duke Energy's understanding is that they may have gone into the identified tree protection zone, and they are currently working with the contractor and developer on ways to address the situation. Duke Energy, I will add, is committed to working with the developer and the contractor who did the tree removal to address the lost trees. And what you'd likely see is this reflected back at the end of the development when they do the landscaping component and ensuring that, to the extent we can, that additional trees are planted or done in a way that is aesthetically and landscaping-pleasing in that particular section of Holly Springs Road. So want to provide you a few details on that, a little bit of background. Happy to answer any particular questions. We also have some staff who, if I need to phone a friend, so to speak, who are on deck here, that can help answer any particular questions that you might have.
So how do we get ahead of this, Randy? Because it's, you see it, and tree trimming would be an understatement, I think, of what they've just done. I mean, it seems like they've decimated those trees.
Well, one component, and I think that where you have started to get ahead of it is your tree ordinance that you did pass. Now, you know, the challenge with that is it does take some time before you start seeing that impact. But I would say from that standpoint, you are out in front on that particular issue. It doesn't look like it now because of some prior approved developments. The other thing, though, too, is I think there is an opportunity, I had some good conversation, again, with the Duke Energy Government Liaison, in terms of, you know, when these happen again in the future, if they happen, that we're communicating to the greatest extent possible in terms of what any plans might be in terms of removal or extensive trimming, so that we can at least be a little bit ahead of it from that standpoint, either communicating with you all or the community, or at least understanding what is going to occur. So those would be a couple thoughts.
Thank you. Appreciate you following up.
And the last one, Mayor and council, really proud of our organization and real grateful and thankful, the Holly Springs Food Cupboard recently recognized the Holly Springs Town Hall with a certificate of appreciation for supporting the Holly Springs Food Cupboard by collecting 1,660.3 pounds of food donations this past year. And so on behalf of the Board of Directors, they gave us this wonderful recognition and plaque that we can put up. Really appreciative of our town employees who have stepped up to help support our community and those who are in need, and we will continue to do so, and just really appreciative of that recognition from the Holly Springs Food Cupboard. So great job to the staff. That's it. Thank you.
Counselor, closed session?
No, sir.
What does that mean?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.